Do they not get proper notice for the June?
No, no, they're thoughtful.
I will, uh, I will.
Have to make sure you know. They were just in that condition, you know, said, I don't want to see one.
Well, I like your response. Yeah, it worked. Oh, such a relief. Hours of testing, but at least the parents is owed a little. Actually, I want to change something about the comprehensive plan. Yeah, for order and, um, just to take notes for them because matter of work.
Welcome to the planning commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I say no.
A second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt?
Dan.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knop?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. And we need to elect a chairman as vice chair. And so is there a motion for a nominee for a chairperson?
I nominate Dave. I second.
Are there any other nominees? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt?
For sure.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knop?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
And is there a motion to nominate a vice chair?
Oh, I nominate Joe to continue as vice chair. I second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Burnt?
Sure.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knop?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Are there any amendments to the amendments from the December meeting? I didn't have any, so is there a motion to approve the amendments?
I would approve this.
I second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knop?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt?
I'm working there as vice chairman.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Okay, our next item, this is a quasi judicial hearing regarding the public hearing and consideration of OSP 19-02 request by Drew Martin for an off-street parking variance in conjunction with application for short-term rental permit. The application of, or requesting a, applicants are requesting a variance to allow the assurance of a short-term rental permit without, uh, without requiring off-street parking spaces. The property is located at 213 West Sylwo Street, MAP 51031 BD, tax lot 1103, and is a residential moderate density zone. The property is owned by Drew Martin and Amy Mory, municipal code 17 dot seven, seven, dot oh nine oh. Occupancy and parking required, requires two off-street parking spaces for residential dwellings and additional parking for a short-term rental license. The request will be reviewed against the criteria of the municipal code section seventeen dot eight four dot oh four oh variance, off-street parking. Does anyone object to jurisdiction of the planning commission here at this meeting at this time? Does any commissioner feel he or she has a conflict of interest or personal bias? Has any member had an expartee contact or made a site visit? Site visit. Okay, staff report.
Uh, yes, um, I would like to just kind of go over the highlights and remind you that for variances, I don't usually give a recommendation. I just want to go over kind of the facts of the case and highlight where the code speaks to certain things or we may have some history regarding this. And so I've tried to do that. In the background, there are a number of undersized legally non-conforming lots in Cannon Beach, as you well know. And this is in the R1 residential moderate density on 213 West Sylwo. And it has example of a couple undersized parking lot, parking spaces along with the residents. I've highlighted back when we were doing some of our work on short-term rental, how the conflict between the 15-foot front yard setback can come back to bite us if, if someone who's reviewing or doing the plan review for the city is not really paying attention to that as part of the dimensional requirements when they're doing that. And this is one of those examples where we have no record of a off-street parking variance in association with this. So I'd like to point out in 1784, oh forty, in the off-street parking and loading facilities, the applicant response says easily fits two wide cars for the requirement of a short-term rental, does not impose difficulty for visitors or public while in use. And I comment that, yes, this is an under, under 5,000 square foot lot. It does have the, you know, width for the, but they fall two to three feet short in that fitting everything within the, within the site, within the cars. The short-term rental ordinance provides for two off-street parking spaces for one and two veteran units, similarly to a typical residential home's two parking space requirements and thus presumably comparable in use. As the planning commission is well aware, short-term rental task force has recently been asked to study short-term rental data and provide recommendations for policy going forward with parking being a key area of analysis. I've discussed this with the applicant, we did a site visit for them probably a year ago now, and, and told them, you know, we will be working through that and some changes may come about, but I told them this is another alternative. They chose to go this alternative to at least ask for a variance for the short-term rental. And two, the granting of the variance will not result in the parking or loading of vehicles in public streets in such a manner as to materially interfere with the free-flowing. Staff's comments are, the question here is, refers to free-flowing of traffic on the streets. You've received some public comment from neighbors or people in the vicinity discussing that, so that's one thing to take into consideration. Will that be impacted? We have no evidence as of now that would, you know, it would change substantially anything. I did point out from the data that I presented you guys back in that short-term rental discussion that the average number of nights rented per year for our short-term rental of 14 days is just over 60 nights per year. And we don't have comparable data for set-in homes, so it's kind of hard to tell, you know, what kind of impact it would have along there. On, on this third standard, the granting of the variance will not create a safety hazard or any other condition inconsistent with the general purpose of this title. I point out there's no evidence that would increase safety hazards for the area. I ran it by the other city departments and had no comment on that as well. Reason that we're reviewing it under the off-street parking is because of B, that last standard that takes it out of the hardship type of variance procedure. Any questions?
Could you break that last point you made down for me? Sorry, I was processing a lot here.
Okay.
Wasn't entirely keeping up with you.
On B?
The last point you made, I needed a little bit of understanding of that.
On, on B? Where it says where a variance request is being reviewed under this section, only the criteria of this section shall be addressed. And so it, the 1784 thirty are not applicable, so you don't kind of review it under the standard variance act.
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess my broader question is, are we looking at this as a variance because parking spaces are inside?
We're looking at this because they're asking for in, so they can do short-term rental, okay? So as I showed you in the 2005 building permit that was issued, they did not, you know, ask for, when that was done, they did not, on their plan review, so when we do a plan review, you should be checking for two parking spaces for that residential use, right? Well, we're not, we can't, we, we can't, as far as I understand, go back and retroactively grant that off-street parking variance. We're doing this for the short-term rentals.
So the question then is, you need two spots to have a short-term rental?
Exactly.
And do they have the two spots?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so upon this review, and that's what I told them, you know, we're going to be looking at parking changes with short-term rentals in the future, but if you would like to do this now, you would need to go through that because from our records, as I showed you, that it doesn't comply, it doesn't comply under that building permit and the diagram that was shown, you know, they, they built right to the setback, which is 15 feet.
I have a question on one of the pictures where it says overlap the water meter. Is it okay to overlap the water meter with cars?
Yeah, we have, you know, we, we have no kind of standard saying that, you know.
The water meter needs to be cleared.
Yeah, exactly. Get clear of our free of constructions or whatever. I have seen that in other codes, but not here.
Well, we've got two letters here that suggest that the idea of having a short-term rental, the parking spots are legitimate, is only going to add further tolls to street traffic on that non-street. So I don't, I don't know how you evaluate the neighbors' feelings about this with what the buzz is about how this is just a country walk after the cattle run through there once in a while.
Yeah, like I said, we don't, many places I've worked, we would keep traffic counts kind of continually on our streets and everything. I think we're going to start that kind of program and we've got the new equipment to start doing that. But, and with the traffic study, we will get a lot more information on this, but right now, we just don't have anything that I could tell you.
Well, if you look at the place.
Yeah.
You know, try, try backing in and out of a two-stall slot and not interfere with whatever is going on, who knows what kind of alleyway that is. It doesn't seem very safe to me.
Well, I would say that, you know, they're, they're parking there now and, you know, and there's nothing that's going to stop those two. And so that's what I was, when I was giving my review is really how is it, how is, is there any difference that we really would have as far as vehicles? That's not going to change the two vehicles whichever way this goes. So that's the only thing that I can.
Two vehicles, yeah, but this is a six-person rental, right?
It can be allowed up to six as far as maximum occupancy.
I don't understand why we were talking about these kind of variances when anybody else walking into this town, building a house, has to have two spots if they're going to have a house, period. And, you know, that seems like pretty bottom-line restriction, and I, I don't see any reason why.
So I would ask that if you're, this is getting into deliberation right now, you're asking questions of me, just technical questions. And, and as far as those kind of policy issues, yes, those are definitely things we should look at and hopefully we'll be looking at in the next year. But right now, let's, any questions on this application?
Okay. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff reports. This is a public criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue recludes the appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, argument, and evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such a request by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional ungranted testimony, arguments, and evidence. Persons who testified should be recognized by the chair. Please state your full name and mailing address, and if you're representative, identify who you are representing. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Thanks for having me here. My name is Drew Martin, mailing address 2734 Northwest Savior Street, Portland, Oregon. Our hope is to be able to rent the house occasionally. I know that once a permit's granted, there are important limits that the city has set. Our, we're people that play by the rules, and when we first learned that, that we couldn't allow our, our parents or our friends stay there without us unless we were there as well to do the short-term rental, we realized we need to have a short-term rental permit to be able to allow our friends and everyone to stay there. And so the parking variance is being sought to be able to use the house the way that we do now with us and some friends visiting, two cars being there. It could be times when we're not there, but our goal with a six-person occupancy is two cars are what is required for that, and our hope is that the situation would not change based on the way that we've been using the house since May when we bought it. Till now, at the most, it's been, of course, two cars, usually it's just one. And so, yeah, it's our hope that, that in the short-term variance, short-term rental situation, that the, the use of the house and the parking within those spaces would be the same as it is now.
Do you charge rent when your parents and your friends use the place?
No, but it's my understanding that they're not allowed to use it unless we're present, so.
Your parents aren't allowed to use the house unless you're present?
Right.
Yeah, if you're, if you're not charging them, yes.
You're not charging rent?
You're not charging rent?
Yeah.
Well, that's good to know.
Why are you here?
I was, I was told, of course, as you may know, that a lot of people don't fully understand the rules and they explain them wrong, and that was explained to me by a realtor.
I mean, my understanding is if your parents want to come and stay for a weekend, city can't stop them.
Yeah.
You know, unless you're charging rent. I mean, and, because then you would be doing it through one of the agencies that does short-term rental.
Right.
That would be the only way.
Right.
And so if you're not doing it through that and you're letting your parents stay there, I don't understand. See, because I don't think that's what's going to happen here. I think that if you get a short-term rental permit eventually down the road, you know, you're going to want to rent it out too.
I mean, why?
I would think, yeah.
Why else would you be seeking a rental permit? I mean, I just don't, something's not.
Well, certainly, we, we would rent it out, yes. That's not something that we wouldn't do, but.
So you want to rent it out? It's not just for your parents and your friends?
No, that is, that's where this all, that's where this all began, is, is our understanding through a realtor was told that we couldn't rent it out unless we had a, a short-term rental.
But that, that may have been your thinking, your catalyst, but the fact is, you want to rent it out, up to six people.
Yeah. Yeah, well, certainly, yeah. All of this is, certainly, there are limits on everything. We can't imagine six people, wanting six people to stay in the house. We'd like it to be four, but, but yes, the, to be able to do that, to rent it out, to recoup costs occasionally, to be able to offset utilities or something like that, that's our goal.
Okay, any other questions for Drew? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other presentations by proponents? Are there any presentations by opponents? Is there a staff response?
Uh, no.
Okay, then.
You know, the other, the other consideration here is that when this house was built, it could have been built with enough room, and it wasn't. And I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think that we should be trying to enforce restrictions on other people, give variances in a case like this.
This reminds me a lot of like, you know, when someone remodels their house that's out of compliance, and they do a, they do a major remodel, at that point, they have to bring the house into compliance. To me, I, I see a parallel there. I think that there is a change of use, and therefore, if there is a change of use, that needs to, to match the ordinance. Now, maybe after the, you know, the committee and the council make changes to the short-term ordinance, who knows what those changes will be and the situation will be different, but I think until that happens, and at this particular time, I think it'd be a big mistake for us to decide that we're going to permit this change of use and keep it out of compliance. I just, especially given the fact that neighbors have weighed in on this, they don't want it because they think it's going to cause some congestion on the street. And I'm sorry, I mean, you don't know if it's just going to be two vehicles, you know, because once it's a, a short-term rental, they can have three couples.
And visitors.
And, yeah, very likely. So I, I think that in this particular instance, because of the definite change of use, that a house that is already out of compliance is fine, you know, it's existing that way, there's nothing, it's, it's too late, you know, to change it. I think that with the change of use, it should qualify as something that doesn't permit an out-of-compliance change of use.
What, what makes you think it's out of compliance, let's just say, in terms of?
Because it is.
In what sense? What?
Because the parking spaces aren't large enough. They're not, they don't meet the criteria that is set for two parking, two off-street parking spaces. They're not being, the cars stick out into the road. So that is out of compliance. That's why you have to have 18 feet length, they have, I think, 15?
Well, I just, the reason I was asking is, and it kind of parrots up what you were saying, Joe, just to make sure, when this house was developed, it was, it was an undersized lot. There's a requirement that no more than 50% residents constitute, no more than 50% of the building, is that right?
Lot coverage is.
Lot coverage, okay. So I was just going through some of the, the hard numbers here. There's an 18-foot, two 18-foot parking spots currently. Well, they're.
Not completely, yeah, that's the issue is.
That's what's.
Yeah, they're supposed to be nine by 18, and they fall a couple feet short.
So if you go to the lot coverage worksheet when this permit was originally approved, there is a section, I don't know how to describe it to you, but it's a worksheet, and it goes through some mathematical equations.
Right.
And there is a notation, 49.4% lot coverage, okay. But then there's a note, and this might address the question of parking. With parking area not more than 21 feet wide by, and I'm reading this as a 16-foot deep.
Yeah.
Which would conflict with the 18-foot. Did you see that?
Yeah.
Is it 16?
It, it is 18.
I mean, is, is this a six?
Yeah, that looks like 16 to me as well.
Seems like that would be automatic, automatically out of compliance.
Yeah.
If they're 18.
You know, I don't know where that came from, you know, I looked at that as well. And I, and I checked back, you know, the off-street parking code on when we changed to certain sizes or whatever. That goes way back, so it's been nine by 18, so I don't know where he's pulling that from. I, I don't even, I would note that we have had building officials that are working multiple jurisdictions, and so I don't know if that may have been where that number came from.
Is it possible that the reason he put a cap on the width and depth, is that anything larger than that would drive that lot coverage over 50%?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I mean, my, my biggest concern is the congestion that's down there, and you have beach access in the summertime, because I think they live that far from there. You definitely have people parking along toward on that and up against that, and so in order to get out of that space, you really don't have room to turn around, you're going to have to back out. So that's, to me, that's, we're adding injury to, to, to what's going on there right now.
By allowing a change of use with, with the parking out of compliance, or like I said, maybe it won't be once, I doubt it, but who knows what's going to happen when we do the, or when the council does the, the whole rework of the short-term rental thing, but it currently is out of compliance. And the neighbors, I think, the pay-per-sake should count.
Well, the parking in that area has been a problem, even with that farmhouse and.
Yeah, it's a mess. It is, you can't, I mean, the streets are just, people are almost parking out of people's driveways right in front of them.
Every time they get sighted, this is a higher area, start twitching.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I would to deny the request.
I second.
Any further discussion? Call the judge.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes, to deny.
Commissioner Knop?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt?
Yep.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Okay, the, the request is denied, and so we are going to go on to our next agenda item. This is a legislative public hearing regarding the consideration of OZ, I mean, of ZO 19-02, City of Cannon Beach, request to amend the Cannon Beach Municipal Code for the State of Oregon, introducing a new special advance chapter while repealing Title 10, Chapter 8, traffic and parking, and parking and amending the zoning ordinance, Chapter 4, signage definition, Chapter 22, limited commercial zone prohibiting mobile food vending wagons, and Chapter 90, general requirements and regulations on outdoor merchandising. The zoning ordinance text amendments request will be reviewed against the criteria of municipal code section 17 dot eight six dot oh seven oh AA amendment criteria. Does anyone object to the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does anyone believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Staff report.
Yes, this is a continuation of the item, and we have, we began work on this with the Parks Committee and number of work sessions with them, and have recently asked for a few more kind of minor revisions. I made those changes, and hopefully you can see that in the new draft. I just want to bring up that this touches on a few different areas. It touches on outdoor merchandising, it touches on areas that are parades, a lot of events that are falling in gray areas. of events that are falling in gray areas that we will hear from some of our public testimony tonight, but we still have confusion and conflict over some of the languages in the outdoor merchandising, and also, a lot of that outdoor merchandising language, which is kind of conflicting, also falls in the zoning ordinance, and this is also a move to make it a, a more transparent process, but also bring it out, a lot, large portion out of the zoning and, and put it into an events category that's not a land use type of activity. So, any questions on, on the ordinance changes, or any, anything that I missed?
I just, one question, when we talked about the makeup of the committee, I remember that somebody made a comment about not being enough people from the community on the committee in proportion to all of the city personnel, and did that change?
I don't believe so. I think it's still, I don't know if I got consensus, or do y'all want, is, you want me to make a note of that and change it?
Well, somebody made that comment. We did talk about.
It was talked about, I just can't remember if there was, if a certain number was brought up, and there was consensus.
Changes, we got, it was four.
Yeah, so it's, it, it seems that, I mean, so you've got the Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director, Fire Chief, Police Chief, Public Works Director, Emergency Manager, and then, so that's six people, and then two from the community, and I thought we were going to up that from the community to maybe three or four.
I think sort of one.
Yeah, it started at one.
It started at one?
Yeah.
So I would say, I would ask that it be, that, that two be changed to three, and make it a little more balanced.
And that would also be the odd number, which is good for a committee.
Is that a motion?
No, I hope that we move the community members on the, on the Special Events Committee from at least two to at least three resident liaisons.
One second. Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Knopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Any other questions on the, on the notes?
Did you see the letter from Julian Sorenson?
Yes, and so, this is a public hearing, so this is, yeah, so we'll have our last public hearing.
Yeah, okay, uh, okay. The permanent criteria we consider are noted in the staff report, listed on the criteria sheet, actually, as well. Testament, argument, evidence must be directed towards that criteria, or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code, which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Valued to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties an opportunity to, to respond to the issue precludes the appeal based on that issue. Persons who testify shall receive recognition from the chair, give their full name, mail and address, and, and, and appearing in, in a representative capacity, then, however they represent. Is there anyone here that would like to testify? Does everybody have a copy of Ms. Sorenson's letter?
No.
Okay. I have.
I haven't seen it, but I don't have an official copy.
For the record, Bruce City Dentist, I'm the City Manager, and tonight, I'm representing the Parks and Community Services Committee, and they asked me to come tonight, none of, other than Bart, everybody else was busy, I guess, so, they asked me to come, and I'll just read the letter, because it's short. It says, this is from the Chair, Julian Sorenson, to the Cannon Beach Planning Commission. I'm writing today on behalf of the Parks and Community Services Committee, as we prepare for the upcoming 12 days of Earth Day celebration in annual street fair in April. Many of the participants hosting booths at the street fair are nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations dedicated to environmental causes, conservation, and education. While the city prohibits commercial activity at this type of event, we request consideration of a proposal that would allow these nonprofit organizations to accept donations, which would help offset their costs, provide an opportunity for public engagement, and support their important work in the community. Thank you for your consideration, respectfully yours, Julian Sorenson, Chair, and the Parks and Community Services Committee. If I understood the conversation at the last meeting correctly, the, the intent of this, of the 12 days of Earth Day is to make it an official city event, and as such, that would allow the city to say, okay, this is what this event is about, and actually make invitations to different groups to come in and participate. And one of the concerns is that if you're, you know, bringing in a 501(c)(3), and they're not able to take donations, or if they have, you know, something to, you know, sweatshirt or whatever it is, just some mechanism for earning money that may reduce the number of people that might participate. Did I have that right?
Good job.
That's my praise. If I can go on. But, yeah, so the idea is, you know, we understand, or they understand, the point about the outdoor merchandising, but because of the nature of this event, and we're trying to bring people in, and there's the possibility of benefiting the people that we're inviting in, that, that if you all would consider some sort of a mechanism that would allow that to occur.
Oh, yeah.
I think they've already decided that nonprofits were not going to have to go through this process.
We, we, exactly, and so.
Now, now, if you have profit organization, or, or organizations that don't have nonprofit status, have applied for, well, that's another issue, but, but if it's a nonprofit organization, I thought they were not going to be affected by it.
And, and it's spoken to, and I can show you the two places where, yeah. So I would let you turn to the very last page, 22, okay? This is where it's changed for the outdoor merchandising section, where it says, for the purposes of this section, the free distribution of merchandise on public property or in the right-of-way without a special events permit is considered outdoor merchandising. And you'll see we added that line in there. Now, that refers you to special events permit, right? And so if you will go back in your special events permit, and you look at page eight, line four, page eight, line four, says, E, all official city functions and any registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit are exempt from fees. So they're exempt under this.
It doesn't say that they can sell outdoor merchandise.
And that's why the committee wrote the letter.
Two separate things. You're talking about being exempt from fees, well, that's one thing. They don't have to pay the fee for a permit, but it doesn't say anywhere in this that they can, they can sell sweatshirts or take contributions. That's what we want.
And you want that everywhere?
We want it to apply to any nonprofit or to the Earth Day.
At any time, I guess that's.
Well, Earth Day only happens once a year, so that's.
For 12 days.
Right, 12 days, yeah, like Christmas.
Jeff, it's like, I'm sorry, I think that, what, what's being looked for is, because it's, it's tied to 12 days of Earth Day, and it is an officially city-sponsored event, I think if it could be tied to that, that would probably be okay. I don't think we're looking to say that if somebody wants to set up anywhere.
So that's why, that's what that F says, so you.
No, it doesn't say that.
It does, so, for the purpose, it says, a free distribution of merchandise on public property or in the right-of-way without, so if you get a special events permit, it exempts you from there. So we're still making, we're still.
If, if we don't understand it, how is any, how is, you know, the, a, you know, someone who's not pouring over this thing going to understand it?
What, what I'm not seeing is any, any reference to donations. So if there was a reference to donations somewhere, that would be acceptable.
So should I put just the free distribution of merchandise or donations, or?
Begging is acceptable.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be.
Anything else, I mean, you know, we can.
Apply to a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does need to be called a nonprofit.
Yeah.
For example, when they have that Earth and Ocean Festival that happens, they, I assume that they'll, you know, they will have to get a permit for it, I guess, but they won't have to pay for it if it's a nonprofit. I don't know how, I'm not sure.
Yeah, the gallery group is a nonprofit.
Mechanisms of that, yeah, the gallery group is a nonprofit. So, and so if they invited again, a bunch of local groups, nonprofits, to participate, we want them to be able to sell their.
Yeah.
Sweatshirts and T-shirts.
But we still want them to get a special events permit, we want them to get permit for two.
But they, but they don't have to pay for the permit.
Right, exactly. And so that's what I'm trying to say.
That's fine, but that's fine, we get that. But, but they're, they need to know that it's okay to sell merchandise if they're a nonprofit at a special event.
Yeah.
So that would be an expansion, so you'd have donations and the ability to sell.
Right.
Okay, I think that's important.
Coffee cups, or whatever, whatever merchandise they're making with their name on it to raise money for the nonprofit.
As long as it's a special event and has the permit.
And has the.
Right.
Yeah.
They can't do it any, just any.
Yeah, you just can't sit, set up a booth on a corner and start selling stuff for your nonprofit.
Yeah, that's where I wanted to keep it still.
Well, yeah, and I think that's.
So who's getting that permit?
Well, my Earth and Ocean Festival will have to get a permit for their next event next year, but they will have to pay for it.
Okay, but.
Because they're a nonprofit.
But if there are a series of groups, some of them nonprofits, some of them, whatever.
In the ocean, Earth and Ocean, you mean?
Yeah, I, I don't.
No, no, it's all nonprofits. Only nonprofits can do it, that's the thing. They have to have a 501(c)(3) designation in order to collect donations or sell merchandise.
Joe, can I attempt to answer your question, as I understand it? Is it, there's some, there's an organization, maybe it's the gallery group, they apply for their special event permit, and then there might be people that come in under that, there'll be 501(c)(3)'s, is that, oh, everybody understands this?
Yeah, they're liable.
Yeah, so they would fall, they would fall under that, but they all don't have to apply for a permit.
You know, that because it, because appeals here would be a lot lighter of timber.
Yeah, agree.
Yeah, that's what happened last year, well, it isn't what happened last year, because they didn't have the permit last year, because they didn't have to get one, but they, the gallery group invited four nonprofits in under their umbrella to speak at the Coaster Theater, to do artworks on the beach, and to set up booths in the, you know, convention center, what do you call it, my convention center?
Community center.
Yeah, community center, and so, that would still happen, it's just that this time they'd have to get a permit, but they wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't have to pay for it.
And, and some of these events end up donating money to nonprofits?
Yes, yeah, that, they did.
Yeah.
Which was great.
So I've made this note for F, okay, so listen to, and regardless, this is, we're going to make this in your recommendation, and I'm pretty sure I know what you're after. Now, it may not be the best language yet, but we're still going to the council, right? So they can read through it and figure it out.
This has to be clear.
But I have, right, for the purposes of this section, the free distribution of merchandise or acceptance of donations on public property or in the right-of-way without a special events permit is considered outdoor merchandising and is prohibited.
See, that's, I understand what you're saying, but to me, that's a backward way of coming at it, because it ma, it makes it.
I think all ordinances are, unfortunately.
I know, but that's the negative, it's like, what, if you do it wrong, it's prohibited. There's nothing saying what you want to do, to do it right.
It's just like, you know, I would refer you to the perfect as on the page before, which is page 21 on B, all uses in the C1, and, you know, every one of our ordinances are written, written this way. They're not my favorite way of writing, but I'm, that's the way it's been done in this.
Well, why can't we add another letter that just says, outdoor.
Or another sentence.
Or another sentence, it says, merchandising and acceptance of donations by 501(c)(3)'s that have, are operating under a permit are permitted. Acceptance of, is permitted, or no, are permitted, yeah. So acceptance of donations and merchandising by 501(c)(3)'s who have a permit, I mean, that's not good English either, but I'm just saying, that, you know, we're just putting another sentence in it that says, it is permitted. That would make it clear.
Well, we can just get rid of, is considered outdoor merchandise prohibited, we'll just put is permitted.
Unless, unless, or it is prohibited unless you are a 501(c)(3). I just think that putting another sentence that's positive is so much clearer. Really, because I mean, they don't have some guy coming here thinking he has to, he can't rent his unit to his, he can't let his parents stay at his house, you know, it's that, I mean, you know what I mean?
That was a Realtor.
I know, I, I mean, I didn't.
But I understand your intent, and we know the recommendation that's going to go forward, and so we'll, I, I will try to draft a positive, now that I understand where you're getting this from.
Maybe, got a clarifying comment, hopefully. Understand, well, this request was not as broad as what you're talking about, and going broader is fine, but this request was going to be specifically for city-sponsored events.
Right.
I'm not giving, I'm not giving.
City events.
City events, yeah, whatever, yeah, city events.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, but we've not, I, I have not, anyway, given a thought how it might go to other organizations that are doing, you know, events through the year, like through the chamber or something like that. So our request was much narrower, but.
I'd like to see it broader. I, I think it needs to be broader. I think it needs to encompass other events like the Earth and Ocean Festival, things like that. I think, it already does the farmer's market, that is already, you're allowed to, you know, sell.
In the community booths?
Yes, you're allowed to sell here, 501(c)(3)'s can sell their merchandise there, but I think it has to be broader, because I think we're going to end up having more special events as time goes on, and a lot of them will include the participation of nonprofits, and it's one of the main ways that they can raise revenue is through this merchandising.
Yeah, and I agree with everything you said, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't from the request.
Right, I understand, I understand the request, it's just for that, yeah, I get it.
Well, thank you, okay. At some point, I have a question on the ordinance, but when you finish this question.
Do you have a question for me?
I think it's for the, for the commission. When, I heard discussion about adding people to the committee review, or the review committee, and I guess my question is, what would the, the function of those people be? And the reason I'm saying that is, right now, I mean, there are no votes, it's kind of, it goes to planning, it goes to public works, whatever, and each of them is evaluating, and if there is going to be, somehow be a, a traffic issue, you know, police will weigh in on it, if it's going to be, we have to make sure that the insurance is covered and all those kinds of things. We don't make any decisions based on what the event is, or when the event is coming, that kind of thing. So I'm a little confused on what citizens, what their role would be in that review process.
Do they like it or not?
But see, but we have to be careful, that we can't say, you can have yours, but you can't have yours.
No, you can't.
Bruce, is that a process, I think you said this before, I want to make it clear, that's a process where it goes from one department to the next? Not everybody gets in a room and sits down?
No, we never, we never get, no, it can also go out, and I don't know, maybe it's a commission wrong me, that, what happens, and what can happen is it goes out to five different departments, and then they'll respond. Ultimately, all the results come back to me, and it's, it's kind of a no or no-go, or these are the comments that they're going to have to comply with, and then if, if, if everybody signs off on it, then I will, you know, approve. And then if it, if, if everybody signs off on it, then I will, you know, approve the, the event.
Then it's not a committee.
Yeah, I, I would disagree, it's always been called a committee.
And, and I would say it's because of the history of it, because, and, and I've worked in other places where it is a committee, and the history of this was, they didn't, they didn't need to do it, and then over the years, it hasn't been that way, it's been going to departments.
But I think when we discussed it, I think.
It was a committee.
I thought it was a committee.
Me too.
Yeah. No, I'm sorry, 'cause that's just one of those things, it's always been called that, and it's never been an issue.
Well, I think it should be a committee.
And, and frankly, I think that, um, committees that are making decisions like that shouldn't be made up exclusively or primarily of employees of the city.
Okay, and, and I understand your point, Joe, but the things that we are addressing, they have to do with ordinances, with public safety, that sort of thing, there's no.
Yeah, they're not subjective at all.
Right, exactly.
But I don't believe it. I mean, I, I understand that's the, that's what people want, is it for it to be that way, and that's the ideal, but I don't think it wor, it ever really works that way in human nature, I just don't.
Well, I don't know of an event that, um, put, you know, set maybe Monday night, but, um, that went through a process, that didn't go through a process. We have no incentive to, um, say, you know, yes to you, but no to bar. I mean, it's strictly, do you have the insurance if you're gonna do this, you know, what kind of public safety issues, that kind of thing. We don't, right, we don't consider content at all. And so, and my, so my question is, I don't think we can, and I think that was your comment to Lisa's.
You can't.
Right.
Yeah, if American Nazi Party wants to have, host a parade, unless you have, can really justify it by a safety concern.
Well, but, yeah.
You have to let them do it.
Yeah, and if we allow, um, the 12 Days of Earth Day to have one, then it makes it even harder for us to say no, you know, to that group. Now, would there be a whole bunch of contingency, contingent items on that? Absolutely. Would we wanna make sure that the police department had reviewed it? Yes. But one that I hear about is, is the corgis. Okay? We have almost nothing to do with the corgis. Yet we, when they come to us for a special events permit, it's part of an end of the street to put some portlets. Everything else is with the state. So even if they come in, we're regulating portlets and locations of portlets. We have no ability to say, you can't have that event on this weekend. We just don't have that.
Do they get a beach permit for that event?
I don't know if they get a beach permit, but that would be through, through OPRD, but I think that they do. My understanding is that they do, but we have just a little piece of it, and that's all that we do, we can't, we don't regulate. And so when somebody does something, say, through the chamber, um, I, I don't know of us ever turning down a chamber event, um, you know, to say that we'll, we'll do Joe's but not Lisa's, that kind of a thing. It's, we just, you know, go through, and we're looking at the conditions, and the conditions are protecting the functions, you know, public safety, insurance, making sure that there's, you know, garbage pickup, knowing that we're gonna have more activity in an area or something like that. So it should not be called a committee, I understand.
I agree, yeah.
But I, I'm not sure, again, with, with my understanding of how it works now and how it has been working, what the additional people on that, what role they would play. I'm just asking a question.
Even two, what would they play? What would the two people play?
Right.
Unless it was oversight of the city to make sure that the city was following the rules, that would be a.
Right, and that's kind of what I'm, will assign our, make sure we're following the rules.
Yeah, so, I mean.
We don't really.
It's not a committee.
Yeah.
So it's not a committee, do we, we work it, or do we want to just have one person on it to kind of keep it on?
Or at least two, which would mean one, then I, then I retract my change, it doesn't make any sense. I mean, it doesn't make sense to have three people going over all these permits.
I agree.
If, if we don't trust the city manager to do it properly, then.
There's another issue.
What's the point? The whole thing.
Well, I don't think you can look at this, you know, personalities, you know, of individual positions, I would view. It seems to me that we've had experience of, of, uh, city employees wanting to make things happen. And all in all, I think having citizens on these kinds of committees, even if they are not, you know, providing some technical assurance, they're providing a buzz of the community about them, and, um, and the likely to have people approach them who are upset about the event, too. I think that that's what their function is, is just to keep the city honest.
So what would their role be?
To keep the city honest.
But how would they? I'm sorry, Jan, I couldn't, yeah, what'd you say, George? I'm sorry.
To keep the city honest. I mean.
Okay.
If there is something that creates a little stir amongst the city members of committees like that, city employees, having two or three, run of the road, you know, local businessperson, local resident, sitting there, kind of watching it, they're in a different position, they, they don't report to the same people, they, they can't be punished by somebody on the, on the committee for what they do or don't do. And I think that's the advantage of having residents and, and small business people on a committee like this, is that they take alternative positions. And I think that there's a, you know, you run the stuff through city folk, uh, there's a kind of group thing that takes place. And, you know, we're sitting here struggling with this god-awful Nicholson mess up there, you know, and it's like we spent hours and hours, the council spent hours and hours on this thing. And, and it was only happening because someone from the city found some way to ignore parts of an ordinance and, and, uh, and pushed this through. And I just assume you see a few people on committees, no matter how heavily balanced they are toward, toward city employees, sitting there. I mean, that's what city committees are about.
So would it work if, um, the review process stayed the same? You know, it goes through all, all of your different channels, and then once they have all reviewed it, then the, the committee that those people meet with the community people and get the final, their final approval?
But would they have veto authority? Would there be a vote? And what would the criteria be? Because if they don't like the event, and we've had any similar event ever, then we can't stop them.
There are, yeah, there are no standards, uh, other than in the minor where I'm, I'm doing that.
Well, I still think that, you know, this town is going to be besieged by special events, and, and I think that city employees are going to take a kind of literal conservative view of, of these events, and, and as Bruce said, well, if we did it for one, we better not do it, but we better do it for everybody. And I don't know if it would be on basis of content, it might be on the basis of experience with the people that are doing the event, or the kind of event it is, if we see certain patterns developing. I don't know what it is, but I, all I'm saying is that I'd like some honest brokers that aren't all in the same environment.
Okay, then, um, my suggestion would be, if you're gonna include that in the ordinance, that some, uh, definition of the role, because, again, we've never regulated content, um, so I, I don't know what it would be, so I think you should be more specific about what their role would be.
Oversight.
I know, but, but oversight, it's, if they meet all the criteria, what oversight can somebody have, other than veto?
I guess to make sure that, you know, the, you know, that's all that can.
Has there been an event that hasn't received a permit?
I, but I'm sure that there, there are, but I guess my question to you is, what problem are we trying to solve? What event has occurred that failed as a result of our process? Because our process is only to make sure that city services are ready, we're properly insured, public safety. So that's what we review.
So why do we have this monster packet, packet of stuff to make sure that the city properly reviews safety issues and so forth?
Because that's our criteria.
Well, yeah, I know that.
Yeah, but that's, that's why we have all the, all the material we're looking at.
What if the first time a special event was held, you went through this process without a committee, and then there was a review by a committee after their first year to kind of evaluate whether there were issues that weren't met?
I, I would understand that. If there's something, that somebody wanted to say, well, we have a problem with this, or this caused more of a problem than we thought, we would welcome that feedback. But it's just doing it in advance. Other than veto, I don't know what input they would have.
Bruce, in the current, um, process, if any one of the people in, in the chain says this doesn't work, or it's a fire hazard, is that a veto? Does that stop the event, or is that just a note of concern?
No, it's, that would stop the event.
That would stop. So any one of the people in the chain now could stop the event based on that concern?
Yeah, and then that would, you know, uh, instigate a discussion, you know, with me, um, if it's a public works, issue, and they have the police department there. And there had an event that, um, didn't get a permit because they didn't meet certain requirements. I think, I'm trying to remember, but I think Sandcastle has had issues in the past, and so they didn't get the permit, for example, I think it was this past year, until they agreed to, you know, provide the insurance and also to take full responsibility on the beach for the parking. Because in past years, the police department was on the beach, and if something happened anyplace else, with traffic being what it was, we weren't gonna get there. And so it was like, this, the parking is kind of a no-brainer, we, you know, made suggestions about CERT and services help us in the past, but ultimately, um, we weren't willing to accept it until they hired a professional company, and it came in, and it worked, and we signed off on the permit. But prior to that, it was a public safety concern, because we had no police in town, and, um, you know, so that.
So if there is a, if there's a concerned voice by one of the people on this panel.
Yeah.
Um, then it comes to you, and you guys, the group discusses it, and comes up with ideas for how to make it work, or says this doesn't work?
Well, it's, it's kind of a combination of both, like, like in the case of, um, uh, Sandcastle, we met with the committee that was putting it together, and we went back and forth on that, as far as, you know, what, you've always done it, well, we've always been uncomfortable with the situation, and you have the responsibility, 'cause we can't continue to do it, unless you wanna pay for additional police officers or whatever, which are not possible to find, because it's always a weekend in the summer, so nobody's gonna loan us anybody. So, um, that was one that was not gonna, I mean, we were always working to make sure it happened, we weren't trying to say, no, you can't do it, but you know, we're not gonna do the, the parking for you. And so that got resolved. There's been other situations, like where we went from, uh, our insurance generally now says it's $2 million if we're gonna have somebody covered. The reason for that is, um, over $2 million, we, you know, we can't be sued for over $2 million, that's our limit. And so we wanna make sure that if something happens at Sandcastle, or the arts, you know, thing, when everybody's walking around drinking wine, and walks out in traffic or something like that, that we, that if something happens, that our insurance covers this up to the point, that none of you will have to pay anything as a result of the judgment. So that's why we have like that kind of a requirement in. We also have our insurance company, the people that we buy insurance through. Interestingly, uh, one of the things they said, you know, it will cost you this much for insurance, because actually, as a result of the process, last Fourth of July parade, Legion couldn't afford to get the $2 million, and so we made the decision that we would make up the difference. We kind of gave them a grant to make up that $2 million. But when we were talking, they said, yeah, that'll be fine, except no horses.
Oh, my Jesus.
So, oh, that, and, and no throwing candy. So the whole thing, you know, back to, somehow, somebody, the, the story came out that the city manager's not letting anybody throw candy, well, it was because, and frankly, it wasn't our event. It was their insurance, their people telling them, we're not gonna insure you, or if an event happened to you, or something, you know, with that. So those are the kind of things that we're looking at, but yes, there's a process, we meet with the people, we'll do whatever.
And when you say we, and excuse me for diving into this, I'm just trying to.
No, no, thank you.
Try to visualize the process. When you say we, you and who else sits with the group that has a question about it?
Um, it will depend on the, on the situation. If it's something having to do with, um, you know, traffic control or something like that, it, it, in a lot of times, it's just the chief. Or it might be me and the chief, or it might be me and the public works director is the chief, because we may be rerouting something. But it's always with the intent of trying to find a way to let the event happen, but not let it happen to the city's detriment, um, in terms of public safety, that kind of thing. Now, unless we say no more events ever, we're always gonna have events at the wrong time of year. So that's, that's a different thing. So when we're doing it, it's usually that there is, there is allowance for these events, and then we try to make them as best we can.
But so far, I mean, all the, all the parades we've had, at least as far as I'm aware, have always been benign. In other words, what if there's, someone puts in a permit for a, a political position parade or something, or, or gay pride parade? Let's say they went have a gay pride parade in Cannon Beach, and the, you know, the chiefs, and the chief says, well, I'm afraid we're gonna have, you know, anti, anti-gay pride people showing up, and they might, might cause problems, and, so it's a safety issue, so no. I mean, I, I.
I don't, I've never seen that, and I think that what we would do.
Well, never had it.
I know, I know, I'm saying, so I'm not, I don't know if that's a problem.
It is if it's a safety concern. I mean, that's, that's all you have, all the chief has to say, or the police have to say is, this is a safety concern, we're concerned about people's safety, and then what do we do?
Because of somebody's opinion?
Because maybe, uh, you know, an anti group is gonna show up, or is threatened to show up, or, you know, uh, you know, not, maybe not a big gay pride parade, but, but like, let's say, um, uh, you know, a Bernie Sanders parade or something, you know, you're gonna have Trump supporters show up with baseball bats, or there's wind that they might. I'm, I'm just wondering, at what point, I mean, does, and the police chief is nervous about it, rightly so, and says, no, can't do it. I, I just don't know where you, where that line gets drawn, you know?
And, and again, we would be working with the people to try to put something together. Um, and the example you give is, is a difficult one. I've had many experiences with the Klan and their events, um, in my previous jobs. But what happened, if we did it, it would be because there was something dire, and again, going back to what would the people that are, if, if people were to be appointed as civilians to be, you know, on that, non-staff members, what would their role be? Because what if the chief was said, I think we're able to do this, and then somebody else said, well, we don't think you should, you know, because maybe they don't agree with the position.
Yeah.
But we've not, we've not run into that, but, um, there are requirements that we could impose. They would have to, um, you know, possibly provide additional security, pay us for additional security, um, the insurance requirements might go way up. Um, there's all kinds of possibilities with it, but we would work to try to have the event. And then, but if it's just too much of a possibility, and if the chief said, this is a danger to the citizens, I would not sign off on it, then we would deal with it in court or whatever. So, um, again, I would take examples, and also, um, just some kind of criteria that those folks would be acting under, when, before it goes to council. Any other questions to me?
No.
Do I need to sign out who I am?
Please do.
Okay. Yes, I'll work on that. All right, thank you very much for letting me have your time.
Thanks.
Okay, is there any additional testimony?
Jan Seibert-Worman, P.O. Box 778, this is not on, but it's okay. I just have a question, what just happened? So did you just, you all voted before Bruce spoke unanimously to have three people, and now where is it, where does it stand?
Bring the light closer.
It, it, it's not on, I don't know how to turn it on.
It's on, I should have it done.
Mm-hmm.[1791.13] Mm-hmm. Better.
If you want, I'll come back and say everything again.
I really don't want you to say it all again. I heard it.
Thank you. Good.
I think, Jan, we agreed that it's not a committee, you know, that's what, so we're trying to figure it out.
So what is this?
Well, we haven't decided that yet.
We don't know yet.
Oh, so you're just still in the stage of not knowing.
Right, because it really isn't a committee. It's just going through the channels to get a permit. It's not, there's no, it doesn't seem to me that there's any decision to be made other than a safety, insurance, that kind of a decision. At least that's what it appears to be. But then Joe feels like he really likes the idea of having this oversight, so...
I would support the oversight. What I'm experiencing as a citizen of this town for over 30 years is the staff right now, we have always had these citizens committees, and now the staff, in my view, and I think in a number of other people's view that I've spoken with, the staff is so heavy-handed with these committees that the committees are being, basically, they're not being able to make their recommendations as much as they used to because the staff is just so heavy-handed. And so I'm very concerned with this as well, as maybe Joe is, that our citizens are being, we're supposed to be running our town. It's supposed to be from the bottom up. And instead, I feel like it's the top down. And I'm very, very concerned about this happening more and more and more with the decisions that are being made.
So you'd be more comfortable with, even though it's really not a committee, there being three, at least three community members?
If there's people that are willing and able to do that and interested, I think it should be, I think it should be allowed. Because like you say, it's, it's helping keep people honest. Because people may mean well, but people all have different ways of approaching things. And right now, I feel it's very heavy-handed, weighted with staff making the decisions of our town. And it should be us with our counselors making the decisions and staff helping to facilitate those things. And it's, it just seems to be changing and I'm very concerned about it and it's not only me. So that's my statement. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other additional testimony?
Okay, well, this is the second, I mean, we extended this again, and I would like to wrap it up if we can and to move it on to...
What the community members want, three or more people from the community doing oversight, I don't see how it could do any harm. It's just going to make things more heavy and more work, but it's not going to hurt anything. I mean, as long as whoever's on doing that oversight understands that any yes or no has to follow these criteria. I mean, it has nothing to do with what they like or who's their brand or what the purpose of the event is. None of that matters.
So we voted on having three people?
We did.
And so...
We can leave it like three. I mean, it's not going to hurt anything.
Yeah, okay.
And if it makes the community feel more comfortable, then I think, fine.
So then are we...
If you can find three.
Right.
That's another...
Yeah, that's another issue, yeah.
But we'll see.
Okay, so, but is there anything else to add to this before we pass this on?
Should we change the word for committee? I think we need to do that.
Can I just say that, you know, I think I started the conversation from the beginning saying that I never worked with one where it wasn't, because of the committees that I've worked with have been committees. We meet once a week and we would, each department head meets that one day we sign off on any special event. That's why it's written that way. I would suggest, and this is the, my suggestion, if you want it as a committee that does that meet once a week, you could, that's your recommendation, just like you've heard public testimony. This is your recommendation. You, you, you may decide you want it committee, but, or you want the panel version, but it's your recommendation to the council. The council will then take that recommendation plus staff.
I like the committee idea. I do. And I know it makes things more, really adds another layer of work for, for staff and I understand that. And they have so much going on. And I don't think on a weekly, I think a weekly basis is too much. But the idea of a committee, that way, I think, it makes people, it, everything's right out there, you know, the police chief is saying it and the, you know, and then the traffic guy, or, you know, the public works to say, yeah, that's true, blah, blah, blah. And someone else would say, yeah, that's not true, I don't think that would be a problem. And we have a discussion, it doesn't have to be long, but I think committees work well and they seem more democratic to me than anything, than decisions being made departmentally in a vacuum. So I don't know. That's just, I think a committee's a great idea.
I mean, my thinking is if you were having a committee for somebody who's having a special event that you don't meet one time.
Well, you don't only meet, I mean, I don't know what, I can't remember what the timeline is, how far in advance you have to get your permit, but, but I mean, if you met, would once a month be enough?
I think you do it when necessary.
Yeah.
Okay. When an application comes in, you do it within a week.
What happens if people aren't available? I mean, I know that, you know, we have set meetings, that really helps, but, you know, getting three people to your point, Lisa, and then, you know, hey, one week from now, we need you here.
That's why I think it's very good to have a set time. And then, and then if you, if there are no applications, you cancel the meeting.
Yeah, you could do it though.
Yeah. Because that way, anyone who volunteers to be on the committee for the community knows that they have to be available on, you know, Wednesday night at 6 o'clock, otherwise they won't volunteer.
As opposed to Thursday.
Right.
And I would say that if it, if it works as the one department to the next or the committee, this ordinance is still written, as Bruce said, you know, if there are standards, well, the standards do exist, they're on page 12 and 13 under B. And he is the one that even, this committee is just recommending, just like this committee does, to him. And then he signs off because they have to meet these standards. So that committee would be identifying, just as the department has to do, the issues from 1A through 1Q, you know, where it's deficient in those areas and we need some more. So that's, you know, I think that's when we talk about what conditions are applied. If they're not met there, then we can apply them 1/4, so...
Yeah, they're very drawing. I mean, they're just, it's nothing to do with opinion. It's all...
Well, it's everything to do with opinion. It's language. It's language like, in P, special event will not require the diversion of police employees from their normal duties. What are their normal duties?
Patrolling, answering calls, answering calls and patrolling and responding to emergencies.
Yeah, so I don't know how you, I don't know how you manage Sandcastle two days unless you put in another three lanes on 101. And that might, you know, help them out some.
Yeah.
My point is, you know, there's a subjective aspect to all of this. Just the nature of language. And I think this is an example of, you know, sort of fake cop language, actually, to be what people want.
Fake cop language. My goodness.
I mean, I, I want to go against this whole damn thing today. And I've been opposed to what's going on here since it was first mentioned. So, you know, I just, I think we're pretending that we're doing some good here.
Yeah, but aren't you pretending that this city is not going to grow and have tons of special events in the next few years? What, do we like it or not?
Well, I, I think I've said before, you know, writing 21 pages of prose that even you admit is hard to figure out where anything is at is, is not going to do anything about the number of events you're gonna, you know, what are we going to do when we have 12 events going on the same Saturday afternoon?
They won't get coming if it conflicts with the other ones. It says that in there.
If it conflicts, it for space.
Yeah.
But, but for happening, I mean, you could end up places, do 12 events in one weekend.
And if every one of those 12 events had insurance and had security and had all the things it needed, what would happen now without this? What if 12 people want to have an event tomorrow without this ordinance?
Well, as I've said, it would be possible for, you know, all kinds of nefarious organizations or non-organizations to put on events in Cannon Beach and you would be able to do a damn thing about it.
They can now.
I know.
Yeah.
And they will in the future.
Mm-hmm. It's the nature of a free society.
That's right. And I like it that way.
Yeah.
Well, until we get crafty attorneys down here who push their way through on certain developments that we don't like and then we're complaining that we don't have enough protections what we need, what do we need to change? Yeah, exactly. What if we need to, you know, start limiting something, which is again, more language to the code, that we need to stop certain developments. So I see this too. I look at it and go, oh, there's so much here. But conversely, you know, I think about what the city's going through and the changes that we've heard about tonight, certainly around through recently. And to me, it's, I just look at it as a, Cannon Beach has been in a certain way for a long time and the world is really rapidly changing and we've got some crafty people out there who really test us. And yes, I struggle looking through all this, but then again...
Every time I see a page of this kind of language, I'm thinking about attorneys.
Thinking about attorneys?
Yeah.
Well...
I mean, they're in the business of finding a loophole. And I'm guaranteed that this committee here is not capable of finding all the loopholes highlighted.
Couldn't agree with you more.
The thing that happened with Nicholson had nothing to do with loopholes. It didn't happen because of the loophole. It happened because people sat there on council and allowed it to happen. They allowed themselves to be intimidated by legal counsel for their crafty people. They weren't crafty. Those lawyers were dummies. They weren't crafty. I was listening to everything they said, nothing...
But I think that's what Clay's talking about.
Okay. Are we ready to get this to city council?
Yeah, let them do it.
Did we, was there...
Well, somebody make a motion to move this forward to the city council.
And we're keeping it to leave right now.
What's that?
Because I've heard no move away from the three.
Yeah. Lisa, did you want a commission? We talked about commissions.
Me, committee?
Committee, sorry.
Do I want a committee? I like committees, but I'm not going to, I don't feel strongly enough about it to push it through. If someone else, if anyone else feels that way, I would back them on it.
I'm on the same boat.
Well, it's currently written with committees, so...
And just the...
Yeah, and I like that. So I guess that we leave it to the council to define what that means.
Good. Okay. No further discussion. We're passing it on? All right?
But we need...
You need a vote. You need to make a motion, vote.
I move to accept the special event ordinance. Is that enough?
A second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt?
No.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knop?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. So I have a motion for the chair to sign the appropriate orders. Someone, or yes?
Is this before the committee, right?
No, no, this is to sign the order.
Oh, okay.
Okay. You second it, huh? No, Lisa, I'll shoot.
We'll go with it. You can have it.
Call roll.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knop?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Okay, next is the work session item, the Coos Street Cluster Development.
All right, I'm going to use the new screen when it connects. And I'm going to go hit this slider real quick. you'll let him discuss the project with you. But this really has to do with a few things and, and one of them is just, once again, language and the way that we're a little hamstrung with some of the ordinances. As you know, I think recently I haven't been a big fan of the planned development ordinance language, but I'm equally not very keen on the cluster development ordinance.
So the cluster development, is that in our ordinance right now?
Yes, and so that's what I'm going to point out. Cluster development, some of the materials are provided for you, I did want to just touch on those. So I gave you, and Joe, I just want you to know, I just had a meeting today with the Crest Regional Council and one of the council members from City of Astoria is on there. They said their last packet was 700 pages long. So this is not that long, you know, so, but that is just, this is the materials that I've given you. I've given you my little, the cluster provisions that are currently in our ordinances. Also, a little segment on cluster developments as, from the zoning practices, which is an APA, American Planning Association. And then the model residential cluster development ordinance from the American Planning Association. I looked at the Astoria Cottage Cluster Ordinance and I provided that for you. Beaufort, South Carolina, another one to give you another example. The community housing development from Sky, the recent Sea Lark, Eightplex that we, that's the only one that we've done with kind of a workforce settlement. And then the proposed site plan from the Coos Street that we'll be talking about a little bit. But what I wanted to point out is that really clustered developments, I've been working with them for 20 years or so, in rural areas, do it a little differently than made urban areas and things. And it's becoming, become much more kind of in vogue in the last 10 years with cottage clusters because of the need for different types of housing. But most of them are built around a typical ordinance formation where you have your purpose, your definitions, the applicability, contents, what's going to be included in the, the application in the site plan. Then the calculation of that density numbers opposed according to what dwelling units you're offering. Procedures for review, so what are your, what's the process they're going to go through? Some of these do administrative types, some do it through planning commission. And then there's a review criteria. And then you're going to get into these waivers or often what are the, you know, kind of exceptions you're going to make in one way. And then the controls, so what types of deed restrictions or other... And then the controls, so what types of deed restrictions or other resale or re-rental that will be tied to this form. And then conveyance of the open space and who's going to manage that.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm just not clear, is it?
Oh, sorry.
A cluster development, how is it different than a PVD?
So, yeah, I'm going to get into that kind of real quick here.
And is there anything in the cluster development ensures affordability? Is there any kind of, or is it just, they could be very expensive?
So, yeah, I'm going to get into that. These are great questions, but if, if, the first, the reason why we're doing this is because they came to me with this idea of keeping these kind of historic cottages and to keep them in some type of long-term rental. But unfortunately, that is a, really a use that's not in compliance down there, this kind of multi-family type of use on one property. And you'll see in that last sentence of that variance section, it says, no variance shall be granted to allow the use of a property for a purpose not authorized within the zone in which the proposed use would be located. So we couldn't do it just as a simple variance, and so that's why I put that out there. Okay, so where does this come from? It comes from our own comp plan language. So one thing I want to keep us, keep in mind in this is that not just for the north side, but also under our housing policies, it says, the city will consider the use of cluster development and plan development techniques as a means of preserving common open space, protecting significant natural features and providing for variety of affordable housing types. And I refer you, if you get a chance, to read that Clatsop County Housing Study that was recently done in this past year. And the real need for middle housing, it's something that is seen across the state, across the nation right now. It's the housing types that aren't speaking to what we actually need to provide. And so the current language within our zoning code is this, and it says, the following provisions have been established to regard cluster development. In any zone, cluster development may be permitted to maintain open space, reduce street and utility construction and increase attractiveness of development. Cluster development is a development technique wherein structures or lots are grouped together around access course or cul-de-sacs or where sizes of lots surrounding structures are reduced while maintaining the density permitted by the comprehensive plan and the style. Clustering may be carried out in the context of subdivision, major minor partition, plan development, replating of existing lots or other review by the planning commission. Single-family attached dwellings may be permitted by the planning commission so long as the overall density of the zone is not exceeded and with consideration of design review board recommendations. The planning commission, which may use the advice of staff or the design review board, may permit reduction in lot size setback or other standards so long as the density requirements of the zone are maintained. And yet, there's the variance cluster language that then talks about, and I'll go ahead and read it since this is the key, but one of the things I want to point out before reading is that you had asked Lisa about, you know, what are the difference between this and the planned development? So one of the differences is the planned development is of course a three-step process. It's pre-application, which is at the staff level. Then it goes to a tentative plan that is presented to the planning commission and then they get those done, they get all the improvements done and they bring back that final plat. And that final plat then has another coherent process. Along with that, there's a long list of what's required within a kind of planned development. And those standards are much more, you can see they're written for, I think, much larger kind of urban plan developments. And that's why I think there was, there's difficulty making that transform to what you've seen before in the planned development, but especially something like this where this is really not even a traditional partition or it's more of a, just a replat. They're not really, they would only be asking in this Coos example, just for one more structure to be, and that's actually to be moved back kind of off of that and not compliance of zoning criteria of the lot locations. And then there's the plan, the big key is that the planned development, I think it's four acres that it requires. So it requires four acres.
Four.
Three acres. Is it three, three or four? So there's, there's an acres requirement to that. But it says in here, it says, the planning commission may authorize a variance from these regulations in case of a plan for cluster development which in the judgment of the planning commission provides adequate public spaces and includes provisions for efficient circulation, light, air and other needs. In making its findings as required in this chapter, the planning commission shall take into account the nature of the proposed use of land and the existing use of land in the vicinity, the number of persons to reside in the proposed subdivision and the probable effect of the proposed subdivision upon traffic conditions in the vicinity. No variance shall be granted unless the planning commission finds, A, the proposed project will constitute a desirable and stable community development and carried out the purposes of the comp plan with regard to preservation of natural features, and B, the proposed project will be inharmoned with adjacent areas. And then the definition section of a cluster housing, it means a residential development which has the following characteristic: house sites or structures which are grouped closer together than the standard of zoning district; portions of site not developed for housing is retained as attractive open space which is secluded from fixture development; and the total number of dwelling units provided does not exceed the sites in that acreage growth site area in minus area streets divided by the minimum lot of the zoning district. And so I gave you some examples here of other communities and how they do it. And the reason I did this is because you will see most, whether it's Astoria or Beaufort, that they have usually dimensional requirements or often dimensional requirements even at the cottage court or the cluster level, whatever these areas. And then they will give you kind of examples. The reason I brought you Beaufort here as one of the examples is because the design review board is considering possible revisions to kind of the commercial areas and stuff. And I've asked them to start studying form-based code. Beaufort, South Carolina has won awards for its form-based code and it's a different way of looking at space and use. And so as, as with that first thing I talked about with the APA language, you know, they're built all fairly similar with the same kind of procedure requirements, what those dimensional requirements are, parking setbacks, open space, those are the key things that even with this Coos Street, what we'll be looking at if we look at it, those are the key components.
Is that picture, that's, I can't read.
Yeah.
That's a cottage development?
That's a cottage.
Well, they look awful big.
Yeah, yeah, and.
That's not what I call cottage, I mean, I've seen cottage development. That looks like.
Each one does different ones, you know.
That's for wealthy people.
Well, some are, yes. And some are, and they're, and so there's flexibility in each, in a lot of these. And that's why it's often associated with kind of a planned development type of activity. Some are more restrictive than others. Here's Astoria's example of Astoria's cluster development. I provided that. Some of the terms that are key terms and that need to be defined when you go through these processes are just like, Lisa, like you said, you know, what is, if you're going to use workforce or affordable housing or whatever, to be, to make that clear of what that means in our terms.
So Astoria's isn't affordable housing place?
Yeah, some of them are, and some are not. Some are keyed towards that. You don't, like you said, that one looked very, in Beaufort, it's not, doesn't have to be affordable. And when I worked in Sun Valley area, many of those communities give you two different options. They'll give you a typical cluster development or a rural cluster development and then others will give you what they call the public benefits or the whatever. And to get kind of added densities and things like that, they allow them to do that, but they have to give that kind of public component, which is affordable housing, workforce housing, locked in on the deed restriction. This is the, another term you'll see, which is these AMIs or MFIs, and you know, what that's normally keyed to is what that, and this is Clatsop County 2018, what they have to price those at. And so when we did the community housing one that I put in your packet for Sea Lark, we set the rates at, which will change every time we get the new HUD calendar year comparisons. We would change that every year to meet the AMI levels and you'll see for each one of their units what those were tied at at the first year and they've updated once already and we'll be looking to do that again when the new figures come out. Also, as a key component, so if we're going to tie these units to that cost, we're giving them that 1% of building fees that we're collecting towards offsetting some of their costs in converting these units to. So, so the timing and all those kind of things can be approved within the conditions and usually it's done with a development agreement that is between the two parties, the city and the provider. We talked about density. So one of those things that they will need to discuss with you is there is within there that it's, you know, comp plan and the zoning about keeping within the density requirements. This is our one, so that eight dwelling unit, per acre density would need to have a, as part of this agreement and part of the variance, if that would be approved with a variance for the density. I put this in here because this just happened last week that, and it's something we just got done talking about with the off-street parking variance, is that we're facing parking issues. And that's one of the things that often even these and Seaside is just, we're considering is for any kind of workforce housing component, that they would waive any kind of parking requirements or at least accept same type of variance. Because there is, that often adds to the cost of these things and they're not getting, and this happens all across the nation, one of the key components is they just can't provide the parking that is often required because of where they're often allowed are in multi-use areas and the Coos Streets is an example, is not an example of that, but in other areas. I've had four, in just the past two months, I've had four people come into my office asking about doing affordable housing above or in conjunction with commercial. It's a mixed use type of thing.
Two-story mixed use.
Well, not, not everything is two-story, but some of it has, but to convert it, and they have been told in the past they can't do that because they have to provide parking and they can't provide that. We're landlocked in parking currently. And so that is, these are the.
How's it help if you waive the requirement for parking? How's that help the parking?
Well, because in most cases and in most communities across the nation, they are weighing the cost of that. They believe that they will find parking. They will find a place to park. And that's what they're doing. But they would rather have their citizen, the people, the workforce live there, live with the community.
But I don't know what you mean by find parking. It's either there or it's not, so.
Not necessarily. I mean, the study, what studies have found, especially in urban areas where often this becomes more and more of a problem or an issue, is that, you know, a lot of urban areas are getting rid of minimum parking requirements.
Oh, they just didn't see.
Yeah, and they will put back some.
That's a mistake.
You know, and the studies that have been done show, show, there's mixed results so far, but some areas like Mountain Town communities, a lot of them don't bring a car. A lot of the millennials, a lot of the workforce now don't even own cars. They use Uber, they use some of these new. I'm just saying, that's in the studies that have been studied. And sure, that's not, not in this area.
And they're not, and people who live in affordable housing aren't using Uber?
Oh, well, not in Portland, they definitely don't. Yes.
It's expensive.
Sure, but, but that is, that is how they, and they use public transit and other things. But I'm just saying, there's, there's plenty of other ways to get around and that's where the direction is going as far as planning and zoning currently. And I mean, that is really the direction they're going because they're putting, they're putting people above cars right now and that's the bill. You know, that's what they're having to do. So that is, that's just, I wanted to bring that up because that was last week. That's for, to show that it's not just us that's facing these and it's a close coastal partner that is also facing this issue. Like I said, since this would likely, if they do decide to go this cluster development route, I propose that Vito bring it, kind of the project before you guys to discuss what that process would look like, what, what would be required. I would say that we would have a tentative plan meeting. The cluster development only requires a tentative plan and then come back and then provide the final plan after everything's completed.
I think those little tires are sort of great. I love them.
Yeah.
I'm just, are they going to be, is it going to be affordable housing or not? That's what I'm.
So that's, that's what this is going to be a discussion about tonight. We'll let them, if you guys are up for it, let them kind of present their own project. I didn't want to present a project. So, but I just kind of wanted to complete this process. So they would have that tentative and then come back for the final plan. Now, my understanding is that since this is a multi-family, it would likely kind of behoove us possibly to do the tentative plan as a joint with the DRB so that they can, you guys could do your own, the review together and decide, you know, if they need to meet any other standards as far as parking landscape. Because the DRB has finer standards in those kind of areas than you guys have, more granular look at it. Possible conditions, like I said, the site plan should have the variance, the requests that are being requested such as density, parking, if there's any density, parking requirements that would be needed to vary, lot dimensional requirements like setbacks or things that they might want to do. As many of these communities may not actually, like I said, plat them as individual units because they may not want to sell them as individual units, but they would sometimes do sublots and then have even private areas for, it's almost like a townhouse type of arrangement where they can have some private space within those and then the rest of it is a common open area. Then to the development agreement, which would contain workforce housing structure. Okay, so they have to tell us exactly what Lisa mentioned, you know, what is that, how many of the units would be affordable? What level are we looking at that affordability? That would need to be contained in the development agreement along with those open space conditions and operation and maintenance of that open space. Who's going to maintain it? What type of arrangement is that? What's the structure of that? And then deed restriction. Okay, so if they're going to do this, we put, I think in the Sea Lark is I think 10 years or so, or how long that's going to stay in effect? You know, how long do they have to maintain those three or four units at that level of affordability? And so that's all I wanted to kind of present, to kind of give you guys the our language than other areas' language. You know, there's, as a staff, I would like to see us work on some of these ordinances as you know, and this would be one of those that I would definitely put in that ballpark. But for now, we have the, we have language. So it's, we should at least, it hasn't been utilized yet. So this is an opportunity to, you know, I think, to see how it would go, at least give them the process and the thoughts on what we would require at that tentative plan meeting. So any questions with me?
Do we have, does the city have any kind of system right now to, any kind of body to manage affordable housing? Is there a separate body, a person or anything that would manage and oversee this project?
No.
Down the road to make sure they're compliant?
We do not. We don't have a, it's a, that's a great point. We, you know, most of these communities that do a lot of this, the Mountain Town communities for instance, yeah, they have. yeah, they have a authority that they work throughout the housing authority or often uh that's their still a job and we don't have that. That's why the C L R one was set up as kind of an employer driven and that's how we looked at it, that we think that if employers really want their workforce uh to live here or whatever, they're going to find a way to do that. Um that's debatable. I think you have to have a lot of tools. That could be one of the tools. Um and but the the communities that are really putting a large amount of or percentage of the homes or uh housing types are the ones that do have a lot of these different tools and that's one of the tools is to have a authority.
And is workforce housing and affordable housing, are those interchangeable terms?
They they have different names wherever you go, community, affordable workforce. My only um suggestion is you define that. You guys have the opportunity to do that and that's what that development agreement is about, you know, putting the parameters on that. And you know, there's I can, you know, once we decide we're going to go this route, we're going to let them do that, I will work with them and I will bring that language to you guys in that development agreement and we can go over that.
I I would suggest that this body has no business trying to figure that out.
Yeah.
But that we could hire or bring in someone if we were interested in this and maybe it's a template for something bigger, but that is a very complicated step of laws. I I think it's a great idea, you know, something to talk about and maybe build toward, but I don't see us setting any kind of precedent that doesn't have some of the concerns we were talking about earlier. The lawyer's coming down and going, what about this? What about that? Have you missed this? Or it falls out and all of a sudden it's gone.
Yeah.
I I could find people in Portland that I know specialize in this and if he was open to it, have, but I I wouldn't want to be part of that.
Yeah. And that and that's a great, you know, this gives us the need to start that kind of more deep dive into how how do we do a property?
Was there was there was there a condo up um toward the reserve that was also started as some sort of affordable?
Yes, Elk Creek.
Elk Creek?
Yeah.
And I had heard, and I don't know this firsthand, that it fell out of affordability um before it was supposed to or before it was understood. What is that true?
I thought it was. I didn't know.
I thought it was. Is it still affordable?
No, I think it's still affordable.
Yeah, I think you're talking about the houses past.
Again, I second hand to me. I just know there was some sour feelings in the community that it wasn't handled well and
That's not that's not Elk Creek. That's the houses right.
Because the individual
What we're talking about is just right down the street here.
Yeah.
In a couple of seconds. That was that was affordable housing project. And it's still
It's still
Yeah, Southland and it's turned out Southland.
Part of us, whatever they're called.
Yes.
Well, I guess the key for me is I I like the idea of affordability, but I I just want to make sure it would stay that way.
Right.
We have language to make sure.
You know, in some ways, you know, I I agree with that. There are people who do this for a living. Uh could put together a pretty efficient order, but I I think this body can um argue through vision, whatever, what we think would be acceptable, what we're looking for. Um you know, we don't want to see before we hand it out, but you can do whatever the general rules we have in mind.
I totally agree.
I'd like to know what it takes to change the status of a property. I mean, not the C L R. We assumed that they said it would be affordable housing and they would deed it to workforce housing and now someone is saying it may be a ten-year period, a five-year period, that it's deeded that way. That wasn't the impression we were given.
Well, it it was stipulated in that uh it's the agreement is in your uh prop in your folder and I'm pretty sure it's ten years, but I I can review that a little bit.
I didn't think that.
Yeah, twenty twenty-nine, I think it goes through.
I noticed that in here, but at the time it was presented, there was nothing said that there was a sunset on that. I'd limit.
Well, you know, I I I wasn't here, I don't think, and that for that.
No, but I, James, right? Yeah, because I remember the argument about it.
Yes.
Yeah. Isn't that funny how that happens? Just like Nicholson, you know, you know, that there was
First thing I
an easement and all of a sudden it appeared, you know, yeah.
So would you like Vito to kind of go over the coos?
Sure.
Yeah.
What's that?
Would you like Vito to kind of show you what he's like to do?
Well, number one, you need to change this, the wording of this. You have this as a work session item and that doesn't accept any public testimony, so.
It can. You can do whatever you want. In a work session, you can. Yeah. That's what a work session's about. Yeah.
Anyways, that's what you have written here, so.
But but that's what I'm saying. A work session is for is for you.
Yeah.
Okay, so you can require anything. You can take whatever you want.
I'd like to hear it.
Yes, I would definitely, yeah. And and just for you for you to know, I cannot see the screen because all of these lights that are coming down here
Okay, super. Thanks for telling me because we'll what we'll do is next time try it without the lights or maybe hang it down too.
Yep.
Okay.
It's these it's these lights out here that reflect on the screen.
Yeah, because this is the first time we've done.
Yeah, okay. That helps a lot.
Yeah, but we don't need it anymore.
Yeah.
Now we can't see Vito.
Jeff, are you gonna put up? Do you have a slide of the map or no?
I don't have it, but it's in their packet.
Okay, it's in the packet. Okay. So Vito Cerelie, three one eight nine seven Maxwell Lane, Archiporgan.
Now we want the lights on, right?
Yeah.
So.
Lights on, lights off.
So I've met with Jeff a number of times on this property. I was contacted from the current owner who recently purchased this property on Coos Street. Um it was built in the nineteen fifties and it's similar to some of the slides that Jeff had pulled up and some of the data that we've looked at with Astoria and other jurisdictions with cluster development. This was built at a time when, one, it probably wasn't reviewed as a cluster development in Cana Beach. Um and two, if you looked at the site plan in your packet, it was also built without looking at the current zoning codes as far as setbacks are concerned. So currently, the west cottage is impeding in the fifteen-foot setback on both the west and the south side. Each of the cottages are impeding on the south side and then the furthest one on the east is not only impeding, it's actually built over the property line. So all these cottages were built at a time that there wasn't much review that
What do you mean by over the property line?
It's actually built in on Coos. Part of it is on Coos Street.
Oh, I see. In the right of way.
In the right of way.
Oh, okay.
So there's two on the four, the two west cabins on the on the property have been updated over the years and they're in good livable shape. Um the two on the east, the one in the the middle of the third one, let's call it, on going to the east need would need a a serious interior renovation and modifications to the existing structure to become more livable. And the east one, being that it's over the property line, I've met with Jeff and how to go about proceeding with a renovation to a property that's in the right of way. So we were looking at all of these cluster developments and how to reclassify this property because the owner would like to keep the four cottages as they are on the site. Um one would be for himself and the three others would be used for long-term rentals. Um not getting into the details of workforce or affordability at this time, just because I think that's another topic or further discussion, but long-term rentals on three out of four, one being kept for himself. Um so I dove in and looked at Astoria and I think it's in the packet and we're looking at the major the major problems and issues of the property right now. Setbacks being kind of a minor issue. There's a lot of properties that have been built over the years in Cana Beach that aren't abiding by current zoning um guidelines, but I think the one that always is troublesome for the neighborhood, also trouble for the safety of the street and the community, is the off-street parking. So the goal of this property or that what what I've been trying to work with Jeff on is how to keep the four cottages but main but get four parking spaces so each unit would have its own space. Um if you look at the cluster development guidelines from, for example, in Astoria, which seems like one of the closer ones that has cluster development, they require one parking space per seven hundred square feet. If it goes over seven hundred, then it's one and a half. Each of these cabins are plus or minus three hundred square feet. So the goal of what the owner and myself in design is trying to achieve is to have one parking space on the northwest corner, remove and relocate the existing east building and slide it back eighteen feet so it would meet setback requirements both on the south, east and north in its condition. And that would allow a space to provide off one off-street parking space for each unit. So we'd have four, still have the four cabins. We we would now have four off-street parkings. The only modification would be moving that one cabin or rebuilding the new one of the cabins eighteen feet back to provide the four off-street parking spaces. Um on that site plan, I went through the both the lot coverage and the F A R to make sure that it meets the R1 zoning. So in this case, the square footages of each cabin meet the lot coverage as well as the floor area ratio. So just that's kind of what the the data is on the site plan to just show that the development would, besides the three cabins, they would not meet setback, but all the modifications of the site would meet all the zoning requirements for lot coverage as well as the F A R. Um and so I've been meeting with Jeff, trying to look through the process of how we would maintain the character of the cabins that were built in nineteen fifty. Um it's a it's not a new proposed cluster development, so it's almost how do we go about granting this property as a cluster development with these slight modifications?
I don't understand. I guess I'm I'm confused. I thought cluster developments had common space and that kind of thing. How is this a cluster development?
So cluster development is having higher density on a parcel of land, so
More than that.
And so and shared common space. So that whole back portion would be a common area for each unit. I mean, this is at an early stage of development, but
A common area for each unit or a common area for the whole group?
Sorry, for the for the whole, not
Oh.
not compartmentalized between
It's not my backyard, your backyard, it's our backyard.
Other
Yeah.
people in the past I've looked at this property with have tried to look into actually dividing the property line like Jeff had mentioned. This owner would like to maintain the character. The common area is that that patch of land on the north side. So about, you know, forty percent of the property would be the common area and it's at an early stage and I don't know the exact process moving forward and what types of um applications and approvals we'd need, but further development of that common space would be would be brought into with landscape architects and and developed with the property. But it's a you it's a unique situation. I mean, they're they're definitely some of the oldest structures in the area and so the the new owner would night would like to not demolish the whole site and build build a three thousand square foot house similar to a lot of the surrounding areas. Um he'd like to come down from Seattle, have a small three hundred square foot retreat and then provide long-term rentals for other people.
Is he the same guy who remodeled the inside of that?
No, it's a new it's a new owner.
Oh, really?
They just recently sold a couple of months ago. So.
So just stepping quickly back to make sure I've got it. Two of the units now are inhabitable?
Two, two, yes, two are inhabitable, the two the two on the west and then the two on the east would need some some finishes. They're they have they have wall finishes. They'd probably need new appliances, some updated plumbing and light fixtures. They're just a little bit more rundown. The previous owner didn't put much emphasis on the on the other two.
So what are the foundations like?
The foundations are in in decent shape. For for the size and scale of the of the project, we'd have to probably do a little bit of seismic upgrades with with additional hold downs and strapping, but for the most part, they're in decent shape. I mean, the one on the west is was the only one that actually someone put a lot of attention into and it's a it's a nice, livable, comfortable cottage. It you know, it's definitely more current to date.
And right now, this this project has nothing to do with workforce or affordable housing. It's just
Well, that's some of the conversations Jeff and I have had is, you know, this is a unique situation. We're not, the owner's not buying a parcel of land trying to put four cottages on a residential lot and create a cluster development. Some like with C L R, that that was brought to the planning commission, design review board and the community as a new project on how to solve a problem. This this owner purchased this property with a unique situation. So how, you know, part of it would be maybe long-term rental, maybe one of the four is becomes affordable. I don't know what the classifications or what deed restrictions would need to go with it.
No one's anticipating it being short-term rental, is it?
No, no. And it wouldn't and we looked at that that the short-term rental option was looked at with by previous people that looked at the property and to do so, you would have to divide the property into four tax lots because you couldn't have a short-term rental in four units on one address. Yeah.
There's that's a key piece.
Yeah. So it's definitely for a long-term use and I think right now, currently, I'm not sure yet, but I think someone is long-term renting the west one currently or or plans to.
The most fixed up one?
The most fixed up one.
There's someone living in one of the other ones too. Pretty sure. Not anymore?
I'm not sure.
Um the previous owner that remodeled the one to the west, he ended up unloading them because of a very bad heart condition. It could continue.
Right.
I know. He was my client. I've represented both clients, actually. But um yes, one of the west is currently occupied and it's one of the tenants works for the Sweden boards of Waves and the other tenant works for the No Fields and for me at Dwayne Johnson Real Estate.
But yeah, and then the other two are would need some some additional upgrades and that's where we're looking at. We we could, if we kept under, because they're non-conforming, we could have applied for slight restoration to these properties and kept under the valuation of a non-conforming, but the client would like to improve the site, provide the four off-street parkings and still keep the cluster field and and I and I've been driving to keep the um lot coverage and the floor area ratio in check of what new code the law requires. But we keep, as Jeff and I look through the site plan and the development, each variance has kind of these hurdles that it's not a three-acre parcel of land. It does, you know, we keep running into processes where it's hard to figure out which path to move forward with with both applications, approvals with planning commission or design review as well as, you know, at the end, permits.
I just want to add one thing. The owner currently that's leasing one of the west, the rate is twelve hundred a month and he's planning with the remodel to keep that rate to those other two that he intends to rent long-term locally.
No, I've been in all of them because I knew the previous I met the previous owner and the one the one on the west is very remodeled.
Yes, it's great.
Yeah, it's nice.
You know, nice.
You wouldn't even know, yeah.
But a good job. You did a good job of keeping the feeling of the place.
Well, and that's and that's the, you know, this is this is for all intents and purposes is a a cluster of the fifties, but it just, you know, it's that cabin is nice enough and the other two, if not three, are well enough built that it would be a shame to demolish it to have to build a new house because of because of like to demolish it, to have to build a new house because of, because of, I guess, the lack of zoning review in the 50s.
I hate to see that, yeah. It's cold.
Yeah, I think this is why it's there. I mean, it's, it's the hope is that, you know, we save some of this type of structure or this type of footprint, if you want to call it that, in, in the community, and gives a different type of, uh, I've worked in a, in, one of the mountain towns I worked in, they actually, I might brought up in another context, but, you know, they, they limited the size of the units, and so, any, if you wanted to expand your size of the unit, you bought transfer development rights from other properties, so that you would save historic structures like this, and you can't, you know, so there are tools out there, and this is very similar to one that we did, where it wasn't built so much on FAR floor ratios or lot coverage, it was built on unit sizes, because that was, we did studies across the mountain towns, that was, that's really what was, was keeping our middle housing out, is that people's just going to come in and build a McMansion, and, you know, that's what happens.
And then, I, this wasn't in the package, but just so you, you can see, the, the photo, and when you drive down the street, like this truck, for example, that's parked here, the property line's, you know, nearly back at the face of the cabin, so there's only been one, if not maybe two cabins that have been livable to date. So, part of the effort is to move that one new building back, because I think once all four are in good shape and rented, it would be upsetting for the neighborhood to have cars lined up on the street. So, it's trying to resolve that issue versus just renovating them all, or modifying them all, and then renting them as is. So, it just, these application processes are, are not set up for situations like this.
I don't understand. Yeah.
Yes. Do you have any questions, or?
All right. Thanks, Vito.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, I wasn't on the planning commission when Nicholson came through. I don't know if there was a work session like we've had, or not. Do you remember if there was a work session like this?
I wasn't on the commission.
No, there was not?
No.
I think it's excellent idea to have an early conversation like this, so we can voice our concerns with something like that, and see something positive. So, I, my hands off to you, Jeff. I really appreciate having a running start at something like this, to, to have some constructive feedback for someone. We might be trying to do something positive in the community, but a couple other little comments came through. I guess that was the big one. Again, I can't help but look at this package, Jeff, the work you put into this proposal, you've got the, the sand management program going. It might, it's not a subject topic for tonight, but it is, it is a theme we've talked about, and that is staff and all the things that are coming at them right now, and keeping up with all of it. I, I don't know how you do this. I don't know how you put a package like that together, maintain the sand management with the time that you have. So, I don't know if it doesn't come from this body, I'm sure, but if part of, if part of your challenge in some of these packages that come through for you is you don't have enough time or staff, I know we want to support you in that, because otherwise you'd end up sitting here fighting about what, what, what's wrong.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't see how you do that, honestly.
I appreciate it, I appreciate having Jill's support, she does a great job.
Yeah, without a doubt. I just, it's, it's more work than the two of you. But, I don't know.
But I appreciate that, because I do think we've got some big projects coming up here, and, and, you know, I would hope that we don't have a lot of withdrawals either, because that also costs us a lot of time to do those.
But no, it's okay.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Well, yeah, but still, you have to do the work.
Yeah.
You have to look at the detail. I listened to the city council audio, you're talking about putting all this stuff on, not microfiche, but electronically storing it.
Yeah.
You don't have, you don't have the capacity, so I know, I want to support you in whatever you need to do more, because ultimately, it just means more fights and mistakes and misses and things we don't know if, if you're understaffed on that. So, I really appreciate what you guys are doing, but tell us what we can do to support you, because we don't want to say you're frustrated with, with staff and processes and that sort of thing, because you just don't have enough time in the day.
Yeah, and, and I think at the next, next month, we'll go on priorities, look at our work, what we did from this past year, and what we, what we want to do next year, and so, that'll be part of that discussion.
Okay, maybe, maybe we ought to think about doing a work session that's not a work session. A work session where there's not something set up in front of us to have to punctuate whenever we do transfer development. Just spend the time thinking about what are the problems we, we see or foresee, you know, horizon in terms of, you know, basically landless Cannon Beach. You know, we could, and, you know, I suppose you could survey, you know, people who've been on staff in the city building for a while, and they could do things like identify possibilities like this. I mean, I, I saw this on the market, and I thought, hmm, there ought to be something to do with that. And, and, and maybe we ought to be a little more proactive as a committee to, to think about things sometimes.
Yeah.
And save the structures.
Well, well, sometimes save them, but sometimes you don't want to save them, too.
Right. Versus a McMansion on the property.
Well, that horse is off the farm.
Well, I think that's a good point, Joe, and, and yeah, I think it's great to have some, maybe that's, that's what this priority session would be. I'll just update you on what we kind of did over the past year, what the future, we have items coming at us, but then also on what we see as those kind of major concerns, what are the, what do we see as kind of exact, what, what I see are a lot of people with some ideas, creative ideas, and, you know, maybe some new solutions. And I've worked in a lot of different areas that have some of those things, and, you know, what, how would we go about that? You know, what's our next steps in some of these ideas? So, on this item, like I said, my, my thought for the next step is to bring it forward onto a planning commission if next month or the following month, or as a item for our cluster development, likely with the variance, and, and with, with all those things that I outlined as part of the development agreements, our plan and conditions. Your all thoughts on that?
What's that?
You all have thoughts on that? Is that okay, the process?
Oh, I'm sure we will.
Okay, and what about the DRB as, as a joint?
I think that comes after.
Oh, okay.
I think it would be good to have a meeting with them after we...
Okay.
Yeah.
They're strangers, me and Lloyd. Yeah.
You know, one thing, maybe, maybe this comes up with council, the city council, but I do think it would be a good idea to see, about having someone else come in on that affordability component, just to give the developer a running start on what we need to see as a city to check on affordability.
Okay, moving on, Ellie comments on the trade report. We need to figure out our November, December, June dates. November being, we fall on Thanksgiving Day.
Isn't that for 2/20?
So, I think in the past, we met on a Tuesday before Thanksgiving, which I would think would work here, and the same thing in December, 24th, or Thursday, is Christmas Day, and so I'm thinking that if we, then on the 22nd of Tuesday, that's my suggestion on those two dates.
That's great.
Does everybody agree?
Could we think about it, or take a look at our calendars? What kind of, I don't know. Of course, I work, I'm out of town lots of times, I'm here one of those two holidays, and so, to take it on a Tuesday night, you can't depart town until Wednesday. Is it possible to do it any earlier in the week, or Monday night?
Well, you could do it on Monday, but with that...
I don't know how many people travel.
Well, but the other thing is, I don't know that we're going to be able to accommodate everybody. I'm just saying that that's what we've done in the past, and it seemed to turn.
And we can also...
Tuesday's got, it starts with a T, just like Thursday.
We can also provide a call as well. If, if we need quorum or we're struggling, we'll have a call in upper. We did that with DRB last week, so.
I think we should do it on Tuesdays and see what, yeah, seems like it's so far away.
Yeah, you can plan around, I mean, the dates aren't going to change any. Well, I'm just saying we have a consensus to do it on Tuesdays in November and Tuesday in December.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good of the order.
Okay, I have a few things. Okay, first one is, as far as the Nicholson-Harden issue, I have been getting reports from people in the community that there were lights on there early in the morning, and someone apparently is living there. So, I'm, I'm asking, is somebody living there or not? And how do you check? How does the city check?
We, code, we can have a code official look at that.
Could you?
You started, started Monday?
I think so.
Yeah, okay, yeah, he's, I think he's on the...
Well, I'm asking that you do that, because I, I, as far as, you know, I, I think somebody's living there.
Okay.
And so do the neighbors.
Okay.
So, I think that it's since, since it happened, it's a mess, it shouldn't have happened, it did, at least now, we have to at least not have somebody live there.
Yeah.
I mean, I think this should be a little bit down, but, so, at the very least, no one should be living there.
They could move it.
Yeah, down to the gull. Anyway, and then the other one is, I just have a question. I noticed that a, a house on, I think it's 3188 Pacific Avenue has completely been taken down, even the foundations are gone, it's just a big hole right on the oceanfront. So, I, I don't, I'm sure I can't ask you this off the top of your head, but if I wanted to see what the building plans are for, I could just come in and look at them?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Now, the, if it's 31...
I think it's 3188, I think.
Yeah, I, I think I know which one you're talking about now. I think that there's, supposedly, my understanding is they're keeping the garage.
Yes, the garage is still there.
So, I don't know if, you know, if that's going to be the final, but I do know that they put in for plan review, so, yeah, you can look at the plans, and it's open record, so.
And right now, they're not asking for variance or conditional or anything?
Not right now.
Okay, and then the third thing I wanted to talk about is, I, I wonder if I'm, I'm proposing that the city of Cannon Beach limit the size of the single-family dwelling. That, now, I mean, my personal, obviously, I would like to see it limited a lot, but just at least limited. So, you know, 4,000 square feet for a single-family dwellings, still huge, it's huge.
So, would you like me to, you know...
Right now, there's 10,000 square feet, single-family dwellings, at the north end. It's obscene. I, I just, it's taking up, I mean, it's, it's not out of compliance as far as, you know, ratio to the lots, I understand that. I'm talking about coming in from a whole different head.
Yeah, I can, you know, I...
And cities do that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I can present different models when that's done, and so, I'm happy to do that as part of next, next week's kind of work session discussion.
That'd be great.
Okay.
I mean, does anybody else feel strongly about that, this commission? I don't know.
No, I, I certainly think there should be a limit, but, I mean, if you're going to stay with the character of Cannon Beach, you, you wouldn't be having these big mansions.
Yeah, right.
What, if we wanted to do something like that, Jeff, how does this body actually get that more formally driven?
Well...
How do we do something like that? Or is it, is it this body, or are you driving that?
Yeah, no, it's, it can be the planning commission, the planning commission has within their powers the right to kind of put together ordinance that would do that. There's various ways, you know, one, one way that I keep emphasizing with something like this, if you're going to do that, and first, you know, we'd also would check with land use attorneys on whether Oregon has any, you know, special courts, not a, but, you know, get what you can out of that. So, that's why I was talking about the transfer development rights, you know, you might allow people to build larger homes, but you want to get some public benefit from that if they do that. And so, that's kind of, there's different ways to do this, and so, you know, there's many ways to skin the cat, as they say, you've got to look at the different alternatives before you, and yeah.
I looked up if it's possible to do it without any transfer development, just do it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, there's plenty of different ways, and that's why I'll just discuss the different types around.
That'd be great, I'd love to hear about that.
So, I think that, I kind of go back to what Joe was saying, maybe we meet and talk about some of the things that are important to us, you know, whether it's the size of the house, or I heard in, in council meeting last week, a discussion about stopping PUDs, driving, maybe we drive some of those. It seems like we're playing defense or reacting a lot in this policy panel versus playing offense and proacting, and some of this stuff, which, it sounds like we can do.
Yeah, which can be, which can be seen in how many kind of ordinances you guys have done over the last 15 years, as I showed with that study that I did, you know, we haven't been doing that, we haven't been introducing new solutions for long-term planning.
Yeah, just a minute.
Okay, then we order adjourned.
I wanted to ask something, or say something. I've never been to a city council meeting, so I don't know what to do when.
Oh, I see. Okay, good of the order.
This is in response to the gentleman with the houses and the parking, and the extra parking he wanted. That extra parking will come into 100 feet of my property, and a stucco. And, you know, what if they wanted to put a motorhome there, and the people were partying? My bedrooms are right on that wall.
Yeah.
And it would be too noisy, and...
Yeah, he was denied.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We did exactly what you wanted.
Yeah, because that was just, oh.
It was your karma, that.
Are you talking about, I want to say, Sisal...
Sayusla.
Yeah, Sayusla.
What?
Sayusla.
Sayusla, over on West Sayusla.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I just know that I live at Tel Aviv, and I'm on the far side, or I don't live there, but I'm on the far side of it, and that's where it was going to be up to 100 feet.
No, no, I'm just wondering if she was talking about the cluster development, or the, or the first.
I believe it is, but I didn't answer then because I wasn't positive.
No, no, I'm, okay, we had two issues.
Yeah, because we didn't give a hundred, but we didn't give a hundred-foot notice, and that's for coups, and so that's why I'm saying...
Oh, so it is the Sisal one?
She's got the...
She has the notice that we sent for the off-street parking variance.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm glad he was denied. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for showing up, yeah.
Okay, anything else for good of the order? Okay, Virgil.